But nobody likes a social.
Good evening, and welcome to the October 3 meeting of the governing body. I will call this meeting to order. If you give your attention to Councilwoman Ortiz, who will provide the implications, stand as you are able, and then remain standing with the pledge of allegiance. Captain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's good to be here this evening along with my Zoom buddy over there. I'd like to welcome Pastor Ben Scott, if he'd come to the podium, please. Pastor Scott is the pastor of East Church of God in Christ. They're at 10th and Gilmore, right down the street from me. Every second Saturday, he hands out the harvest, so we have a street full of folks, but they do a good job. He's also a former state representative for the 58th district, first vice president for State Conference NAACP, second vice president, Topeka Branch. You were president of the NAACP and also a vice president of the NAACP. Is that correct?
True.
And that's all he gave me, but his list is so long, he didn't think we'd have enough time. But you know what? I like to really point out that Dr. Scott is a community man and a godly man, and we appreciate all that you've done in this city.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and thank you, City Council members. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight with gratitude. We thank you for being a God of love who is with us right now in this very room. You never leave us nor forsake us. Father, I pray that this council, for this council meeting on tonight, give council members wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on the items before them. May every decision be righteous in your sight for our benefit and for your glory. Remind them that no matter where we live, everyone is our neighbor, that throughout the ages prophets have called the leaders of people to respect and protect the least of those among us, our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no home. We pray for the safety of our city. We pray, oh God, that you will give those in leadership the ability to work toward eliminating the kinds of atrocities that happens within our cities, and especially regarding our young people. Grant them the wisdom and courage to know and to do what is right and good and true. May they speak out when it's time to speak out and listen patiently and respectfully when it's time to listen. May their counsel always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. To this we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, if you will call the roll.
Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Baldivia Akla.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Kell.
Here.
Nager.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
And Hofer.
Here.
We have 10 present. 10 present.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is we have a couple of proclamations this evening, and the first is for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And if I may have Kathleen Marker. I thought I saw Kathleen in here, maybe not. Okay. A proclamation by the mayor, whereas domestic violence is a widespread, preventable, public health problem impacting all demographics of Topeka's and Topeka communities, and whereas relationships are often counted as life's greatest treasures, and tragically, many are tarnished by one person needing to use power and control over the other, resulting in violence and fear. Whereas domestic violence abusers are violent and cause fear for their victims by violating an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity with their intentional, systematic use of financial, psychological, sexual, and physical coercive control and abuse. And whereas in the Topeka area in the past year, over 1,200 people sought domestic violence victim services and were served by the YWCA Northeast Kansas Center for Safety and Empowerment. Whereas the Kansas Bureau of Investigation reports domestic violence homicides were nearly a fourth, or 22.22%, of all homicides in Kansas in 2021. And whereas we, as the governing body of Topeka, recognize that this violence is inconsistent with Topeka values and cannot be tolerated, and now therefore I, Michael A. Padilla, Mayor of Topeka, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. In witness whereof, I, Michael A. Padilla, Mayor of the City of Topeka, Kansas, do hereby affix my official signature and the official seal of the City of Topeka, Kansas, on this third day of October 2023. So would you like to make a comment, Becca?
Sure.
Sure.
So my name is Becca Spielman. This is Christina Chavez, and we're here with the Center for Safety and Empowerment. And we just want to take a moment to thank you all, and thank you, Mayor, for recognizing this month as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We cannot do this work without your continued support, and so we just, we thank you for bringing awareness to the issue and walking alongside us as we try to eliminate it here in Topeka. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. And here, I've got two copies for you. One for you, all right? Thank you very much for the work. Thank you. Okay, the next proclamation we have is in recognition of National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We have some people that will join me up here. Thank you, Donna. Thanks for being here. Now, did you have one other person coming up, too?
Yes.
Okay. This gone? You're gone. Okay, this is Carla. Okay. Are you Carla?
Yes.
Good to meet you.
Thanks for coming up here. Yes.
Okay, this proclamation, as I said, is in recognition of National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas October 2023 marks 38 years that National Breast Cancer Awareness Month has educated women and men about early breast cancer detection, diagnosis, and treatment. And whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is dedicated to increasing public knowledge about the importance of early detection of breast cancer and with national public service organizations, professional associations, and government agencies who work together to ensure that the NBCAM message is heard by thousands of men and women and their families. And whereas October 20, 2023, is National Mammography Day, and on this day or throughout the month of October, women are encouraged to make a renewal commitment to follow recommended breast screening guidelines and to make a mammography appointment. And mammograms are the best method to detect breast cancer early when it's easier to treat. And breast cancer is the most common cancer among American women and men, except for skin cancers, and whereas death rates from breast cancer have been steadily declining, and this change is believed to be the result of earlier detection through screening, increased awareness, and improved treatment. And whereas the awareness campaign is supporting those who are currently fighting the battle against breast cancer, remembering those who have lost their fight against breast cancer, standing with those who remember their loved ones, and continuing to support our nation's advocates with appropriate activities and programs increasing breast health awareness, and whereas great strides have been made in breast cancer awareness and treatment. There remains much to be accomplished, and the City of Topeka recognizes the importance of working together and supporting events such as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And now therefore, I, Michael A. Padilla, Mayor of the City of Topeka, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2023 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month and October 20th as National Mammography Day in the City of Topeka, and I ask all employees and citizens to join this whole worthwhile cause to celebrate the successes and memorialize lost battles. In witness thereof, I, Michael A. Padilla, Mayor of the City of Topeka, Kansas, do hereby affix my official signature and the official seal of the City of Topeka, Kansas, on this third day of October 2023. And Donna, I have a copy for you. And a copy for you, Ms. Stringer. And would either of you like to make a comment? You're welcome to, if you wish.
I'd like to.
I just want to say thank you, and that's not for everyone, the doctors, hospital nurses, and my relatives and friends that have helped me through this. I really appreciate it, and I'm very honored for this. Thank you.
Practically all of us have been affected by breast cancer, either personally or by someone that we love. Breast cancer doesn't care about your age, your gender, your ethnic background, or your income level. The earlier it is detected, the better the outcomes for those affected and the chances are for recovery. I am so grateful to the work that the American Cancer Society and the Race Against Breast Cancer does. We pay for mammograms for those in need in our community, also providing breast health education. I'm also very grateful for the support of Mayor Padilla and for the City of Topeka and the Topeka City Council in promoting the work that American Cancer Society and the Race Against Breast Cancer does in our community, and also the importance of early detection of breast cancer. Thank you so much.
Okay. Madam Clerk, if you'll read Agenda Item Number Three, please.
Hey, it's a resolution introduced by Councilmember Spencer Dunkin, approving the members of the Land Bank Board of Trustees.
City Manager.
We have, let me get on the right.
Okay.
City of Ottawa.
All right, this is a resolution for the Topeka Land Bank Board of Trustees, introduced by Councilmember Duncan, and approving, where you would approve, the members of that Board of Trustees.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Duncan, do you wish to speak to the item?
No, this is the start of what we hope will, the start of what we hope will be the beginning. Is that a thing? I think once they get acclimated over the next couple of months, the goal is to then try to hit the ground running as a program. It's a small board. I will tell you, there were some other people who were very interested in serving who are not on this list, but you can't have everyone, and I've assured them that they will have a role in this process. They won't be shut out of it just because they're not one of the official people on this land bank board. So we will make sure that those folks are also actively involved in the decisions this group makes, and we'll give you reports and hope we do exactly what you folks have entrusted us to do moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Councilmember Kell, did you have a?
Yes, the only thing I'm concerned about with it is the, you know, I understand we only have it going for one year, I believe, is what we put on the books, but the terms should, to me, should be staggered a little bit so we're not completely wiping out a whole board at once and bringing everyone new if we continue this process.
Okay. With no further comment, we'll move forward with the resolution. Is there a motion to entertain?
Some. Go ahead.
Okay. Motion to approve by Councilman Duncan, and second by Councilwoman Nager. If you'll call the roll, please. I'm sorry.
I think we should announce the names before we go.
We can announce the names either before or after. We're appointing the members, and then we can acknowledge them in the audience if they're here. Thank you.
Councilmembers Kell.
Yes.
Nager.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Baldivia Akla.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Oh, yes.
And Emerson.
Yes.
We have nine yes, motion carries.
Okay, motion's been carried. Now, the following people have been named to the board. Councilman Spencer Duncan, Rhiannon Friedman, Shamika Keen Sims, James Reardon, and Manny Heron. If any of you are in the audience, please stand so we can acknowledge you, please. We'll move now to Agenda Item Number Four. Madam Clerk.
For his presentations, the first one is the Topeka Fire Department's Smoke Alarm Program, and we have Deputy Chief Standiford here to present.
Mr. City Manager.
Governing body, your first presentation will be by Deputy Fire Chief Tony Standifer.
Deputy Chief, good to see you again.
Sir, good to see you. Governing body, City Manager, ladies and gentlemen. Get that slide. Looks better than me up there. Thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz, thank you for the opportunity to discuss Topeka Fire Department. I'm here to discuss a critical topic that affects every one of us, fire safety in our homes. Specifically, we'll be talking about the provisions of free smoke alarms and their installation to homes that currently lack these self, these lifesaving devices. First and foremost, smoke alarms are an indispensable component of any home's safety infrastructure. They are your early warning system in the event of a fire, providing these precious moments that can mean the difference between safety and tragedy. Imagine having access to free smoke alarms and professional insulation right in your home. That's exactly what our initiative offers to those who need it most. Our dedicated firefighters from the nearest fire station are ready to assist you with installing these crucial devices. Though we don't stop at just installing smoke alarms, we believe in comprehensive fire safety. Our crews will guide you in creating a personalized fire escape plan for your family. Knowing what to do in case of a fire can save lives, and we're here to help you prepare for that situation. Furthermore, we'll provide advice on obtaining carbon monoxide detectors and fire extinguishers. These are essential tools in ensuring your home remains a safe haven for you and your loved ones. One might wonder why the fire station closest to your home is involved in this initiative. It's simple: they are your first responders. In case of emergency, by installing these alarms, you are not just taking preventative measures, you're forging a crucial link with the men and women who will be there for you when you need them most. Over the last 12 months, we have provided 142 households with working smoke alarms. All of this is possible with the partnership we have with the American Red Cross. With a continuing grant program, they are able to provide us with these small but extremely important lifesaving tools. These devices are pre-installed with 10-year batteries, which is coincidentally the life of a smoke detector. In conclusion, our mission is clear: to enhance fire safety in our community, one home at a time, we're offering free smoke alarms, professional installation, fire escape planning, and advice on essential safety tools. Together, we can build a safer community for everyone. If anyone does not have the ability to make this request online, they can call the Fire Administration office at 785-368-4000. Thank you for your time and for bringing such an important topic to the forefront of safety.
Thank you, Chief. Councilwomen.
Well, how did you know I had? I had a feeling. Questions, Mayor. Tony, you did an excellent job. I couldn't have said it better, so I thank you for that. I do, I do want to reiterate, it is free.
Yes.
And our firefighters, they put them up.
Yes.
Because we had a council member that put up one in every room. I think he went out and bought 15 to 22. I'm not going to bust him out here, but he's the one with the red face that put one up. He heard my voice, and he put one up in every room. Is that necessary?
A little bit of overkill.
Overkill?
Just a little bit.
Because he wanted his babies to be safe, and I get that. So I might have you maybe make an appointment with him to see if we can take some of those down, because when those batteries go out, I hate to hear that house. But on a serious note, October is always my favorite month because of, we're going to educate what the fire department does, and I'm always ecstatic to see who has smoke detectors and who doesn't. I'll call somebody else out who's an attorney that sits at the table up here, and she heard this bill, and she automatically hurried up and got that alarm system put in. So we're glad that she's safe now. Brenda said she didn't need one, but she gave her application to somebody that did. So however it works, one house at a time, we want to do our part to keep everybody safe. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing, for allowing this on the agenda tonight.
You're welcome. Thank you. Councilwoman Hiller.
I have a question. I'll probably get ribbed for it, but, you know, it used to be that, that you were supposed to check your batteries every October because they had a fairly short life, but now the new, new alarms have 10-year lives to them, correct?
Some do. The ones that we install do have 10-year batteries in them, yes.
That happens to be what I have, but I can't remember when they went in. So what is, how is, how is somebody supposed to know? Just asking for a friend and family member.
That's a good question. One of the things that we do when we install the smoke detectors is we mark the date that they're installed in marker on the outer edge of the smoke detector, so that you can look up and see the date on it, and you'll know how long it's been there.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Councilman Duncan.
Two things. So I shouldn't have added one to my garage like I recently did. True story. It was a room that didn't have one.
You're killing this, Mom.
The units that we install, are they solely fire detectors, or do we also have the ability through this program if deemed necessary? Because I know that they now have the dual fire and carbon monoxide detectors. Is that an option we offer, or have we looked into that?
It is not an option that we offer through the grant. We simply offer the smoke detectors. Now, those that are handicapped, that need a strobe, special needs kind of detector, they can request that specifically through the Red Cross, and then that is installed differently.
Got you. Okay. Thank you.
Good question. Anything else?
I have a question.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Who's going to contact the new city council members as soon as they're elected to get them set up with the new?
Deputy Chief Ortiz.
These are some free applications that I will be giving everybody next week. I didn't want to overload you guys, but I will be giving everybody one next week, and when the council comes along, they'll be on their desk. That's how much I love them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. I appreciate the presentation.
Hi. The next presentation we have is on the Shawnee County Emergency Management Update.
City Manager.
And the presentation will be given by Dusty Nichols, Shawnee County Emergency Director.
Good evening, City Council. Mayor, City Manager, thank you for the invite to come back. A few months back, I came over and discussed tornado sirens with you, and then I was asked to come back and kind of describe what emergency management does specifically for the city, because we are a county entity, but I will talk about EM, emergency management as a whole, and kind of discuss where we go from here. So let me, I have this program, I'm trying to get to work here. It's called Before the Win. It's a program that we use just as a general overview of emergency management, and there's a lot in this, I got to tell you. And the reason we call it Before the Win is because we don't like to say if something happens. We say when it happens, and this is what we're doing before that when the something happens. So just to kind of start off with this, we are government, so we obviously have a lot of guidance from feds, the state level on down. A couple of them I want to kind of specifically look at or discuss is the Shawnee County Emergency Response Plan, and we update that every three years, and that's in conjunction with the state. They have to approve it, and we have to have that ready to go to get any grants or anything else going forward, and that includes any mitigation grants. You guys have signed the mitigation plan. It's about every two years, I think, we end up doing that, and that has to be signed for anybody in the City of Topeka to get any kind of mitigation grants. So that's important that we do that. The other one I want to bring attention to is the Continuity of Operations Plan, or the COOP. There's one called COG. It's Continuity of Government. Those are the things that we look at to say if the worst happens, these are the critical items that we need to keep going, and then we build mitigation around those. What I mean by mitigation is we build those things to be stronger. We have backup plans, so there is no collapse of the government. There is no collapse of business. And the civilian side, it's called Business Continuity Planning as well. So we do the same thing on our end. So going forward, this is the emergency management or preparedness cycle, and you can see we have prevention and mitigation. If we can't get rid of something, we try to lessen its effect on us. For example, we do have tornadoes in this part of the country, and specifically, we've had them here. I can't stop a tornado, unfortunately. If I could, I'd push it somewhere else, throw it, and harm anybody or anything, but I can't do that. So I have to do stuff to encourage people to mitigate that or lessen the effect. That means taking a warning or getting a warning and taking shelter, like the tornado sirens that go off on noon on Monday. We want to train our community to not run out on the porch and take a look outside. We want them to run downstairs and then get more information as we go. So that's some of the mitigation. Some of the other stuff is flood mitigation, where we're building up levees and so forth. So we want to prevent and mitigate all the things that we can, and I'll talk about all those things coming up here, just the next slide here. But, and then that's the preparedness part, is training, discussing, planning, getting those things ready to go, and then we have an incident if something happens, and then we have our first responders, who we have excellent, just outstanding first responders in the City of Topeka and Shawnee County, from fire, law enforcement, medical, gas and power, you name it. They're really, really good. They work well together. And then recovery, of course, and recovery can take a long, long time, as many of us know, going forward. This is something that not many people see, unfortunately. Some people call it an HVA, a Hazard Vulnerability Assessment. This particular version is called a THIRA, which is a Threat Hazard Identification Risk Assessment. And what we do with this is we look at all the things that could possibly happen or have happened in our jurisdiction, and then we start looking at how we can mitigate it or prevent it or get rid of it or plan for it, plan a response for it. You guys get the idea. So as you can see on the right-hand side, it's 2021 rank. That was the previous year. We are currently updating this as well. But I want to bring your attention to the very top one, cyber has an asterisk. Anything that has an asterisk, it's undergone a change. It may be the ranking, it may be the title. One is, as an example, 16, utility infrastructure failure. We had that listed as just power failure. We have now included gas and electric and so forth. So there's a change there, but it hasn't changed position necessarily. So if we're looking at cyber issues as number one, I'm sure you all understand what that could do to a city, to a jurisdiction, especially the government, if that would be a problem. We base a lot of these things on if it can happen, the probability of it happening. We base a lot of these things on if it can happen, the probability of it happening. As you look across the top, the magnitude, what is, how bad could it be if it actually affected us? Uh, the duration, how long could it be? The higher the number, the worse it is. Um, and the warning time, um, little to no warning time on things like that. And then we total them up, and then you can see the consideration off to the side and where they rank. Uh, if we have a question on entities, we base these on life safety, incident stabilization, and property conservation. Meaning, is it a life safety issue? Could it cost somebody's life? Then it rises to the top very, very quickly. Uh, and incident stabilization, can we stop it? Can we prevent it? Can we stop it from getting worse? Um, or can we eliminate it? And then property conservation, is it doing any damage to properties that we would have to deal with later? So if we're looking at this, you see the top 10 basically are all natural disasters with the exception of the one. Um, and so you could see, those are the things we are trying to plan for, uh, get ready for, or prevent, mitigate, so forth. Um, one thing we do in emergency management, there's two things that, that are kind of overall goals for us. Uh, one is to make any of the, any one of these, um, emergencies a planned event. In other words, we sit and look at these and see the dominoes and how they fall and the cascading events, and then we try to put mitigation or prepare things, or prepare our first responders and, uh, communities on what to do should these things happen. The second thing is, we want to get back to normal as fast as possible. In other words, I don't want to be handing out free water in a Walmart parking lot. I need Walmart up and running as fast as possible. So those are the two overarching themes that emergency management try to do, and this is what we base, uh, our planning on is these things here. Uh, going forward, our job in emergency management, whether it's city, county, organizational, any other counterpart that I have out there, is situational awareness. Part of that is basically paying attention to what goes on in our community, whether it is, uh, law enforcement dealing with a hazardous situation, or a fire department dealing with a hazmat situation. Do they need our assistance? We don't automatically roll out. We wait for them to call because they give us safe routes. My staff is only four people and one part-timer, so we can't afford to be dangerous. We can't afford to, uh, risk anything internally. Uh, there are certain things in the state that only we are, uh, that only we can do, um, and we're required to do certain things by statute. Uh, one of those is requesting. It has to go through me or somebody in my office to request anything from the state. You need the National Guard, if you need anything like that from the feds, it literally has to go through my office. So those are the kinds of things we want to be ready for and keeping our situational awareness, whether it's an aircraft flying overhead or a rail car that's delivering hazmat, whether it's over the road or a rail, we are paying attention all the time. So that's a big part of our job. Uh, our standard guidance, again, I told you just a few minutes ago, life safety, incident stabilization, and property conservation are overarching goals. If we ever have a question, we fall back on this. I know I'm talking really fast because I don't have a whole lot of time. Uh, so part of this is communication, communicating with our community, communicating with our leaders, uh, household information, schools, caregivers, workplace, emergency plans. We need to communicate all of these things with our community. Um, part of that is having a personal go-kit. I cannot tell everybody that one go-kit fits all. It's just not there. I can tell you there are some survival items that you need to have. If you have food, water, medication, first aid stuff, that's fairly obvious, but you need to look at internally what you have, uh, needs for in your household. So if you have medication that needs to stay cold, maybe your refrigeration unit with a backup refrigeration or backup power, that becomes higher on your priority for your go-kit. Uh, so you need to really kind of walk through what, uh, those things that could happen to you and see if you're prepared for them. Business continuity, I talked a little bit about that. What are those things that we need to do? What are those essential and critical functions that need to happen, and how do we mitigate those? And how do we prepare for those should the worst happen? Can we continue to do those things? Uh, and that includes continuity of government. Uh, that includes mutual aid, that includes, um, authorities, delegation of authorities. If something happens to somebody in authority, who's the person that picks up? And is it legally, uh, written down somewhere in a statute or in a letter or something? So we need to prepare for that. And those public information, PIO and policy groups, we had the pleasure of working with Gretchen, uh, and some other PIOs in the, uh, in our jurisdiction during the COVID situation. We do our best to work with the media to get good, solid information out. We want people to go to specific places to get information that we know is factual, um, and put that stuff out. But it's also, one of the things we have here is all disasters are owned by the locals. This is very, very important. If you look at Greensburg, for example, everybody's familiar with Greensburg tornado. Um, the people that responded to that first were the locals, the first responders in Greensburg, fire, law enforcement, et cetera. Uh, then they had a huge amount of people and resources flood in there from the state, from an EMAC, which is Emergency Management Assistant Compact, which is basically mutual aid from state to state. Uh, the feds came in, the president even made a visit, but eventually they all left, and who's left holding the bag? The locals. We own it. Uh, I don't intend on, uh, giving up authority or having an incident commander here in, in Shawnee County or Topeka, give up authority to a fed that walks in and says, "I'm here to help." Then help, don't take charge. That's not the way we do things. Uh, and that's not the way NIMs and, uh, National Incident Management System and National Response Plan, um, is put up. So I want to mention the command versus coordination. There's two very distinct pieces of this. We have very good first responders, and this is best shown by this chart right here, right across the bottom. I think my mouth, you can see it. It says command and then coordination, the command line, incident command and unified command. Those are things that happen here in Shawnee County and city of Topeka. That is usually a law enforcement officer, or, um, fire chief, or sometimes, uh, a specialist, whether it's a hazmat specialist. They are the ones in charge. That is the one-stop shopping. They are the point of contact for the event. Those are the ones we work with, as you'll see the coordination in the local EOC, that Emergency Operations Center, that is my office. Uh, we are in the sub-basement of the courthouse. Um, please come on down. Love to give you guys a tour and show you what we have down there. City manager came by, uh, last week. Pleasure to see you. Good to have you. Um, so I encourage all of you to come down and, and check it out. But you'll see over the local, local mutual aid, private sector, non-government offices, those, um, are things that we can, like I said earlier, we can request through the state and get those other partners to come into play, uh, in whatever we're doing with. Most of the mutual aid is already covered, uh, because the state has an automatic mutual aid for fire-to-fire, law enforcement, et cetera. If they request it, they can go office-to-office. It doesn't, doesn't require me to get involved, but, uh, if we run out of resources, you'll see on the left side of this chart, you'll see the requests go up to the state EOC, and that's where you get that EMAC or the Emergency Management Assistance Compact, or Interstate Mutual Aid, um, private sector, so forth. And if it's real bad problem, we have the Joint Field Office. The last time I saw this happen, I think it was 2009, I was working at the Joint Forces Headquarters. I was a military person at the time, and we ran out of generators in the state because of the ice storm. Uh, we reached out to the feds, the state did, and we had a Joint Field Office at KDEM, Kansas Division of Emergency Management, and had hundreds, literally hundreds of all sizes generators put out at a location south of town, and then guardsmen helping deliver those across the state. That's how the system works, and I wanted to just bring your attention, as the arrows going down, you'll see expertise, funding, and resources and equipment. You don't see command elements, because that is held here because we own that disaster. So, uh, this is basically how emergency management works. We are the safety net for our first responders and responders, uh, in our jurisdiction to get the resources that they need. And that is what we do before the win. I have a lot, there's a lot of detail that goes with this. Um, I'm more than happy to come back and chat some more, but, um, I'm ready to stand for any questions.
Councilman Emerson and Councilman Duncan, and Councilwoman Dodi Valkyl.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Nichols, first of all, thanks for, thanks for being here. Seems like a couple of years ago, I got to see you on TV a lot.
Yeah, luckily not so much anymore.
No mask right now, right? No mask mandate right now?
No.
So, okay, okay. Um, I know, I'm, I'm sure in all the slides you gave, it, it kind of said this in a technical manner, but can you just briefly explain like what happens if a tornado hits Topeka tomorrow? Can you just briefly tell us how that works?
I will tell you, it all depends on the size, um, the devastation or, um, emergency. So I'll, for example, I'll use the windstorm, uh, July 14th that we just worked. Some of the, the branches and stuff that came down, um, that didn't require a large response from, uh, first responders other than the, the normal. Uh, we did have some fires with it and, and so forth. So there wasn't a lot of stuff that happened as far as a, a big cleanup or recovery out of that, except for there was a potential, if we spent enough money, um, trying to recover that, we could get reimbursed. We, as far as I know, so far, we have not hit that level, uh, to get that reimbursement. It was a lot, um, but the way that system works, um, I'm still waiting on the, to find out for sure with any kind of certainty that we're not getting anything, but, uh, but we worked internally at the city with, uh, with forestry and, and public works inside the county and city and so forth to gather those numbers. That's a smaller version. Uh, on a large scale, 1966 type, where it goes all the way across Topeka and drops buildings and all that, that's where we have probably, and we've exercised this, in other words, we used the 66 tornado and put the current response, the way we respond now, over that, uh, to see how we would deal with that same kind of tornado, using the exact same scenario that happened in 66. Um, and we had multiple, um, incident command sites. So basically, um, we had multiple, uh, requirements for resources for first responders to be on site. So Washburn University would have had probably, uh, a site. Downtown would have had another incident command site, and that turns into an area command, potentially, but there's multiple incident commands. Then we start looking at who needs the resource more. So if they have a building collapse here and a building collapse there, who gets the big mover of, you know, rocks or whatever out of the way first? That becomes a little, um, hectic, uh, but again, we base life safety, incident stabilization, and property conservation. So we have ways of, um, making those things a priority, working with our first responders. Uh, there will be multiple incident commanders probably based on that kind of event, but we might have one area command, which is somebody that those incident commanders trust. More than likely, that would be a fire person, uh, that's already trained and understands that, understands it's been in the business for a while, uh, et cetera. And then they would work with our EOC. In our EOC, we have 15 seats, and in those 15 seats are people of authority that we call over. So if I, uh, if an incident commander out there needs a bus to evacuate 15 people, I don't need to ask the person sitting in my EOC, and they got to say, "Hold on, let me make six calls." I need them to say, "Okay, I got it. It's, it's happening." And that's how that rolls out. Once we run out of resources, if we need guard, then I make that request to the state, um, and tell them in mission format. I don't create the mission. I don't tell them what I'm, what I need. I tell them the mission I'm trying to accomplish, and they fill, because I don't know what they have. Um, they may have something way better in mind. If I'm saying, "I need 10 people to go push this rock out of the way," they may say, "I have one person and a big rock mover." So, uh, I tell them the mission that, that I need accomplished, and they bring in our help. So that's basically how that works.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols.
So you sort of answered part of my question, but connect a few more dots for me, because you're obviously with the county or the city. I mean, and maybe you can only answer part of this. I mean, when I got here four years ago, we had an emergency management director. I don't know what that position was called or of sorts.
It was an emergency management coordinator.
Right, who was then kind of be, was our rep to outline some of what you're taught, who's in charge when this happens and working with you probably. We don't have that anymore, but I know we've redelegated some of that. But connect the dots a little to me. When that big tornado does hit, who, I mean, are, are we taking all our direction? I know you've got the team from you. I'm not saying it's good or bad. I'm really just trying to figure, you know, as a city, or do we then say, "Great, lead us down this," and then you give out, and who I guess to are my staff, is who on a daily basis is monitoring that we're ready when that happens too? And you may not be able to answer that.
I, I can answer in, I can answer a chunk of that. And I have, I have, um, I will say we need to discuss this more. Uh, again, I mentioned, we, I have four full-time staff and one part-time and, and a handful of volunteers right now. We're trying to increase that with our CERT groups and stuff, excuse me, with stuff like There's a lot of resources in the city, so if we need something specific as far as the county goes, um, we consider it one jurisdiction. Since there's not a coordinator for the city any longer, we are picking that up. Um, I will say I have a concern in that we are not as connected in our situational awareness as we'd like to be, uh, and I would encourage, um, you, this council, to consider maybe looking at that position again, uh, even a conjunction with us, a cooperative, cooperative position. I did speak with the city manager. He had the same concern, uh, that we chatted about, uh, last week. Um, but right now, my phone call, other than our first responders and dispatches like we normally call, I call him. That's my, that's my, uh, push button. So if we need anything, then he could, uh, direct traffic, if you will, that information traffic or where we need to go.
No, that's very good to know. So thank you.
Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Dusty, thanks for the presentation. I know that you and I have been talking about this, what, since about 2020?
Yeah, it's been a while.
Yeah, and I appreciate the times when you've been able, your guys have been able to give me, um, the views of what it is and where you do it. And I know that we've talked about, you know, since Jim Green left and the concerns as far as, um, not having somebody comparable on the city side and the investment that's needed, not, and I know that there's been some talk, if there's, you know, the position put in with the city, even if it's part-time, it's just gonna, you know, the, the county's gonna utilize them for whatever, and I think that at this point, that's really not the point. The point is, is that we need somebody comparable on the city side, and I know that you and I have also talked about, let's say, for example, those top 10, the highlighted red emergencies, you know, that, that are, that are the most pressing right now on that scale that you have. I know you and I have talked about what it might look like if the governing body would be interested in even having some kind of, I don't know if it would be workshop or something of that nature. So as a governing body, we can get an understanding of the most pressing emergencies. I don't know if you do anything comparable with the county commissioners, do you?
Yes, and, and in fact, there's a, there's a sequence of things we can do, uh, to help, I guess relieve that concern that you have. Um, the, the first one, I, I would say, yes, we can do workshop anytime, you name it, and we'll be here. Uh, there is a program called a 402, an ICS 402, which is Incident Command System 402, and it's a more specific overview, and it's designed for elected officials and, um, basically heads of organization. So it's not giving you the, all the details that you're not necessarily going to be dealing with or concerned with, but it does give an overview of what's going on in your jurisdiction, um, specifically as an elected official. And I would highly encourage you to invite me back to give you that, that instruction, and we have given that to the, uh, the county a few times. So, uh, and we're, we're trying to spin back up after the COVID situation, because some of that stuff has changed based on some of the experiences that we've dealt with. Um, but yes, we can absolutely, there's training out there for you that is certified through FEMA and DHS, and there's also specific training within our city, uh, and county that we can give you that we don't necessarily just put out, um, because we need some, uh, we need some more input from, uh, those elected officials and legal and some other things. So, um, but our Emergency Response Plan is out there, and we can give a briefing on that as well. Um, so there's lots of things we can do.
Well, and I was, I was, two other things I was going to say to you that, when it comes to the extreme heat and the extreme cold, but really more the extreme heat, it's like, to me, being more coordinated on the messaging as where are the cooling stations that are opening? You know, are the county and the city on the same page in communicating that to the public? And I could be wrong, but I don't think they are. I don't think we are on the same page. And I could be wrong, but I don't think they are, I don't think we are on the same page.
This, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. My bad.
No, that's okay. I could be wrong on that totally.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say you're wrong, because you are the receiver of that message. If it was confusing to you, then obviously we need to work on that. But I can tell you that the city and county, specifically County Parks and Rec, worked with the city personnel to graph that message to put it out. We don't have normal cooling shelters or warming shelters, because there's a whole lot of legal stuff that goes with that, that quite frankly, nobody's accepted that responsibility for. A lot of it has to do with hours in the facility and who's paying what. So there's, there's some challenges with opening cooling and warming shelters. But our Shawnee County Parks and Rec did extend their hours, and we did get in those conversations and kudos to those, those places that helped out, whether they were a church or a firehouse or a community center. They did step up.
Okay, and then one more question, and then we don't have to answer this tonight, but I just want to make sure, is CERT back up and running now?
We are so close. We have all the, all the pieces in place now, and now we're looking at scheduling and we're reviewing the new CERT guidance, and we're gonna reach out and ask some instructors to jump in and help. We like to get the subject matter experts to teach those blocks. And if you're not familiar with CERT, CERT is a Community Emergency Response Team, came out after 9/11, and they, a bunch of people volunteering, trying to figure out what to do with those volunteers. So if they were interested in police issues, they go to the Volunteers in Police Service or VIPS, MRC, Medical Reserve Corps, Fire Corps, on emergency management or general emergency situations, we're CERT, CERT, Community Emergency Response Team. And they teach basic first aid, CPR, authorities' ICS, some light search and rescue, fire, safety, those kinds of things. So we are very close to getting that up and running. We're hoping to have our first CERT Academy coming up in the fall. And it's two weekends. It'll be a Friday night, four hours, and a Saturday, eight hours for two weeks in a row. So that's that training.
Well, thank you for that, because, you know, we've been talking about that for a while too, and we do have folks in District Two that are ready to take it up. And so I hope you and I can keep in, communicate about that.
You're gonna be my first call to see if we can find a facility in your jurisdiction to actually give that class.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Further questions for Dusty? Dusty, thank you very much for the, and thank you for the invitation to come and visit your office.
Yes, please do. Just call anytime.
Yeah, I've been there, and I think it's important for us to be able to see where you get your work done.
Yeah, and just kind of plug it, because it's really cool. I work in a museum. It's the only blast shelter in the state of Kansas. It has a 2,000-pound door and an escape hatch. It's really cool. You ought to come and see it. Please do.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to agenda item five. Brenda?
A is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Valdivia Akala granting Lulac Center an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150 at Seek concerning noise prohibitions. B is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Tony Emerson granting fellowship high crests an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150 at Seek concerning noise prohibitions. C is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Valdivia Akala granting Brass Rail Tavern an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150 at Seek concerning noise prohibitions. D is approval of a Public Works AIA architect contract between the City of Topeka and Short Design Group Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $157,680 for engineering and architectural services. E are minutes of the regular meeting of September 19, 2023, and there are no applications.
Okay, so we've heard the consent agenda. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, governing body, if I may, I'd like to take a few minutes and ask our Public Works Director Braxton Kopley to come up and address D just for a few minutes, so that you understand what those services are that we're procuring. This is, this has to do with Hotel Topeka, which at the end of this month is technically ours.
No, thank you.
With respect, point of order, on the consent agenda, I guess we can hear the information, but we're not supposed to have discussion. So I just.
Well, I apologize for not knowing the protocol, but I thought you might like to hear the background on this.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
I would like to pull D for sake of discussion. I'd like to suspend the rules and pull D. I know we've already read it.
Pull it from today's agenda?
No.
Just pull it from the consent agenda.
Turn action?
Move it out of the consent.
Move it to an action item?
Correct.
Okay, you might make a motion?
That's my motion.
And here's a second, second from Councilman Kell. Motion is to move item D from the consent agenda to action item 6B. Okay? If you'll call the rule, please.
Councilmembers Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
No.
Kell?
Yes.
We have nine yes, the motion carries.
Okay, motion's carried, and item D on the consent agenda is now item, action item 6B. Do we have a motion on the remaining consent agenda?
As amended.
Okay, as amended. Motion to approve by Deputy Mayor Dobler, second by Councilwoman Nager. If you'll call the rule, please.
Councilmembers Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Can you tell me one more time, sorry, what we're voting on right now?
The consent agenda as amended, they pulled item D off for separate action.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmembers Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
And Nager?
Yes.
Ten yes, the motion carries.
Okay. Thank you for that, Councilwoman. Okay, we'll move to action item 6A, if the clerk will read.
A is a public hearing regarding a petition filed by JTA Properties to vacate a public alley right-of-way and an ordinance introduced by interim city manager Richard Neinstedt relating to the vacation of a 16 to 18-foot wide public alley lying on the west side of the property located at 301 Southeast Wygerton Street in the city of Topeka, Shawnee County, Kansas.
City Manager?
I think that's pretty straightforward, that this is a routine and ministerial responsibility on your part from the vacationer, so.
So this requires a public hearing, and I will at this time open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone present who would like to speak to this matter. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this matter? And for the third and final time, is there anyone present who would like to speak to this matter? Seeing no one, make sure the public hearing is closed. Now, I ask the governing body if they wish to make any comment on this matter. City Manager?
So if you would like some further background on this, Dan Warner, Planning Division Director, is here to give you some additional background on it.
Dan?
Mayor, governing body, I'll be quick. So the applicant's requesting vacation of a portion of an alley right-of-way to allow them to obtain a permit to construct a fence to secure their two properties. City-county departments, public utility agencies have been provided the opportunity to review. There's no issues here. And then for this particular vacation, a public utility easement reservation is not required.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Warner? Okay, we have a motion. Okay, motion to approve by Councilwoman Hiller, if you're second?
Second, Mayor.
Councilman Emerson, if you'll call the rule, please.
Councilmembers Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
And Dobler?
Yes.
We have ten yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, we'll move to now action item 6B, if the clerk will read.
B is approval of a Public Works AIA architect contract between the City of Topeka and Short Design Group Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $157,680 for engineering and architectural services.
City Manager?
So, Mayor and governing body, thank you. I think that this is important, because this is a major work that we're doing on Hotel Topeka to get it to the place where we can find another developer to come in. And I can tell you that our Public Works Director, Braxton Kopley, this has been his assignment since this has happened, is getting the hotel, talking with people, seeing what studies we need. And I would like him to walk through this with you and give you a short explanation of what this group will do for us.
Thank you, City Manager, for the opportunity. This contract is led by a group of architects, the Short Design Group, but they are limited in scope in terms of what they're doing, but they have put together a robust team including structural engineers, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, as well as environmental. So this is a top-to-bottom review of all of our systems and structures and the building envelope to give us good information in terms of what we're going to need to rehab and refurbish this hotel to get it into the condition where we can make it something that our entire community is proud of. And I'm glad to answer any specific questions that you have relative to the scope of work.
Councilman Emerson?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Kopley, I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you for all your work on this. I know addition to roads, all of our facilities we have at the city and a million other things you're working on, you've also done this, so thank you and your team.
Glad to have the opportunity to contribute to the city.
Further comments? Councilwoman Hiller?
I do have a question. When we talked about this now a little while ago, there was a great deal of sentiment on this council to not put ourselves in first position to do the full major rehab of the hotel. So could you talk a little bit about whether, I may lead a little bit with this, but answer however, this, it sounded to me like this assessment would be what we need in order to sell it or make choices about redeveloping it, just so that that full assessment had been done. Is there really an expectation on your part that we will actually do everything on the list?
Ma'am, my expectation is that we will gather good information so that we can put together a good plan and have legitimate costs to be able to develop the next stage. Just as a teaser, next week, there's going to be a contract in front of this governing body with RevPAR International, who is an asset manager. And one of the things that has been made crystal clear to them, that you have made crystal clear to me, is you don't want to be in the business of operating a hotel. And so they know that their mission is to take a hard look at this, to figure out what the pro forma is going to look like, what the cash flow is going to look like, and then to develop a strategy to flag the hotel to ultimately obtain a developer to come in and take that hotel over. We will obviously have many more conversations relative to this.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. I notice this has timetable approximately 60 days. Is that like 61 days or? What's the approximate part of that? Because we'd like to get this as quick as possible, obviously. I know you would.
Yes, yes, sir. The challenge that I have issued to the team is to get me a preliminary report prior to the closing, because if there is something that absolutely is smoking gun and I need to come to you and say, we need to pull the plug on this because of X, Y, and Z, I need to have that information. In their defense, this review is done to a exacting ASTM standard, and it includes not only the evaluation of the facilities, but also includes a plan in terms of, for this particular asset, and let's just use HVAC, where are we in terms of the remaining useful life? What are the best options out there? Is it to come in and do a rehabilitation, or is it the point that we are at the end of the useful life and the recommendation is to do a complete replacement? So in fairness, I need to give those professionals an opportunity to thoroughly develop that. Like I said, they have been challenged and they have promised to give me a preliminary report prior to the closing and then the full report at the approximately 60 days.
Sounds good, Mayor. One more question for City Mayor. When is the closing? When, when is the closing anticipated to be at this point?
I believe it's October 31st, sir.
Okay. It's not too long from now. Thank you.
Further questions for Mr. Kopley? City Manager?
So I'll just say this, governing body, I don't think anybody is real comfortable being at this spot owning a hotel, but we do. We had a long talk with the city of Overland Park, and we talked to a number of other cities that have been in this position. And quite frankly, to sum up what they said, if you're in for a dime, you're in for a dollar. And what that means is you could likely sell that hotel today, but I'm not sure that you would get the developer that you need and the developer that you want to put that hotel back with a flag that would benefit Topeka. And that, as Braxton said, we're going to gather that information for you, we're going to have somebody analyze what you need in that hotel, and then that comes back to you to decide. And perhaps, perhaps with that information, somebody can find a developer that will say, hey, we're willing to take this report, and we're willing to work with it, and we can do this, because it would be a lot better off if we had that hotel back into private hands with companies that know how to run hotels and know how to update them on a regular basis.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a thought, several of us today were at the local consulate in Manhattan in a hotel that 10 years ago was, was not a great hotel, pretty rundown. And we saw today a really fantastic conference center, which is at least three good conference centers in Manhattan that I know of in hotels, not counting K-State facility. Direct competition for us, so we need to make sure this turns out, turns out in a good way. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment? Councilman Emerson?
Mayor, I just moved approval.
Motion to approve by Councilman Emerson, is there a second? Second by Councilman Nager. If you'll call the rule, please.
Councilmembers Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
No.
Ortiz?
No.
Emerson?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
And Duncan?
Yes.
Okay, we have eight yes, with Councilmembers Valdivia, Akala, and Ortiz voting no, the motion carries.
Okay, motion's been carried. We'll move now to public comment. We had about four people signed up this evening. Start with Martha Boatright. Yes, ma'am. Have you appeared before us before?
No, I haven't.
Okay, just, just give you a heads up. When you get ready to start, a green light will be turned on, a yellow light will come up when you have one minute left.
I've watched them before.
Okay.
Never done spoken. So, all right. Hello. My name is Martha Boatright, and as a tenant, I have concerns to be brought before this council. As the city council begins to take up the issue of homelessness in our city, there is a key component of the discussion that I feel so far has been missing, and that is the lack of affordable and livable rental units in Topeka. Over 40% of our citizens rent their housing, and the average rental unit has a rent of over $800. While this puts us well below the national average, it still puts housing outside the recommended range of 33% of your income for a large number of Topecans. And more significantly, almost every single apartment complex in Topeka that isn't a cooperative or public housing is owned by an out-of-state and corporate entity. These corporations are largely unaccountable to their tenants when conditions in a complex deteriorate, and who can, and the tenants can instead only complain to management staff who are often underpaid and overworked. This is a situation that puts many Topecans just a few bad months from being unhoused. I know this from my own personal experience. I used to rent at Mount Vernon Apartments, just south of Washburn University. When I started renting, it was a nice of simple property with a reasonable rent and a building manager who had been there for years. Then we were purchased by Lou McGinnis, a slumlord out of Oklahoma City who has been steadily buying up properties throughout the city. Our building manager was replaced by a string of temps who never lasted for more than a few months. The condition of the building rapidly declined with repairs delayed for weeks and the grounds not well-maintained. At one point, the water heater in the basement was flooding our laundry area, and nothing was done in spite of repeated reports, until I videotaped the flooding and threaded it to go to the news. This should not have to be recourse for tenants to get a safe living place. And I should add that all the while that this was going on, the rent rates were gradually going up for people who were new tenants. Finally, in 2020, my lease came up for renewal with a $100 jump in my monthly payment. This was during a time when I was working two jobs, one of which I had lost my paycheck due to the pandemic shutdown. While I could have stayed refusing to pay rent as part of the COVID eviction moratorium, I would have eventually had to pay the rent back. So instead, I moved into a smaller, even shodder apartment somewhere else in town owned by a company in Iowa whose nearest office was in Kansas City. I eventually found a new second-time job as a census remunerator, which gave me firsthand experience of seeing that the condition of my apartments were not unique in our city. And I will just add here, I didn't have this in my original notes, but it has come to my attention in the last couple of days that these issues with flooding in basements are continuing at the Washburn South Apartments, which are also owned by Lou McGinnis. This is repeated pattern. People will call, like inspectors to come in, and nothing gets done, and nothing happens. We are in need in this city of a tenants' bill of rights guaranteeing safely maintained housing and reasonable rent prices. And we need penalties in place to punish the out-of-state slumlords that failed to meet these expectations. Even better, we should be finding ways to put control of rental units back into the hands of renters, whether that's lease-to-own options or trying to co-foperatize existing properties. Anything that can let people who are actually living in their homes have a say of control about how their homes are being run. It would go a huge way towards creating much more housing security in our city and making it Topeka just a healthier and more just place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. So I am not really excited to be here tonight. And in fact, the, there were individuals I spoke to that when I mentioned that maybe I would have to come to the governing body tonight to talk about what I need to say, I was told, you know, it'll probably just fall on deaf ears. So I'm just going to take that chance, because I am livid. Several months ago, the Citizen Advisory Council decided that they would put on a poverty simulation. It is very difficult to talk to people about poverty, especially when they are experiencing it. That's probably 40 to 50% of the members on our actual council. But they decided to do it. They decided to provide money for it. And so myself and Michael Bell out of Tennessee Town have started to do the planning. And oh my gosh, what a mountain of work to try to put on a poverty simulation. And I have emailed all of you as members of the council, as members of the city of Topeka, to try to get some traction, some real traction on this issue, because we are failing our citizens. Case in point, the news story that is currently on the Topeka Capital Journal and the WIBW website, which I will not give voice to, is a very prime example of the reasons why we need people who have the power to make decisions, people who have the power to give jobs, take away jobs, provide banking opportunities, provide educational opportunities at all levels, local, all the way up to state in this particular case, to attend this poverty simulation. When this city comes to me as the leader of a neighborhood and as the leader of the Citizen Advisory Council, I very rarely tell you no. You ask me to get up at 5:30 in the morning to go to WIBW to talk about changing the culture of code compliance, and I go. You ask me to be in the room when we're hiring a diversity, equity, inclusion officer, because you want to be a better city, and you want people to feel welcome here, and I go. But when I ask the city council, the Shawnee County Commission, and I know that they're not here, but they're going to get the business too, when I ask leaders of this city, this county, this state to come and be a part of something that will change their perceptions, change their biases, the ones that they think that they have and the ones that they don't think that they have, I get nothing. And I am absolutely frustrated by the lack of response. So I am demanding that all of you bring me people to participate in this poverty simulation. And I want those people to be decision makers. I want them to be the very top in this city, in this county. I want them at my poverty simulation. I will not take no for an answer. Volunteers, topecavolunteers.org. It is on the website. I demand that. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the city council, deputy mayor. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I shared information with you in advance, so I know that you won't be able to read it all, because one of the links was 299 pages. This is Digital Inclusion Week by the National Digital Inclusion Alliance, NTIA. And it's really a time each year to amplify, you know, the importance of addressing your digital divide through digital inclusion and equity. What I want to share, since it is that, there would be a great time to mention how I had been one of the advisory council members on the Kansas Office of Broadband Development, where the state has to put together a five-year digital equity strategic plan in order to receive its large allocations of monies for digital equity. Not broadband development and deployment, but digital equity. WiFi's, devices, digital literacy and skills training. The time has come yesterday that the five-year plan from the Kansas Office of Broadband Development is open for its 30-year comment period. This, I can't tell you how much money is at stake, but I do know that they had to do a five-year plan for broadband development deployment. And that was about $451 million that the state is going to get on a competitive basis across the state. This will probably be a large sums of monies just for digital equity competitive across the state, without having input from local area. And I would say that Topeka is way ahead of the game considering what we have put together as a consortium, TSE Good Digital. We have been able to get policy statements passed, funding. You see us giving out laptops and desktops. We are probably farther ahead of the game than any city in Kansas, and that's because we have been working together. But that won't, that would mean nothing if a lot of money is available for Topeka. Every city needs to be having some type of a discussion on the future of these monies that's coming. It's not a matter of if, it's just a factor of when. And the things that we have done to this day is not the bigger picture of what needs to be done. You all have influences and connections that I don't. Hopefully, you will share the information that I did. I sat on the board for so many months, I know what's in it. I don't have all the answers, no one on there. Unfortunately, Topeka had three individuals, Mr. Scott Gowen with USD 501, and Glenn DeBois with the state AARP, and myself. But we need other people who are going to log on, provide their comment, so that when it goes to get redone and submit, signed off by the governor, submitted to the NTIA, then we will know how much money we will be getting bought to Kansas, and we will be in a position as Topeka to move forward. I appreciate the support that we received from the city of Topeka from the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, because that's a part of digital equity and inclusion. And the funding for the Community Resources Council for the other neighborhood computer hubs, that's a part of digital inclusion. There's going to be a lot of money that's going to be coming to do a lot of things, to do things that we always wanted to do. The COVID made the opportunity, made the opportunity to do, but we're still going to need that teamwork to get it done. And so I just wanted to bring that up. If I would have known in advance, I would have probably tried to get a proclamation for Digital Inclusion Week. But I, you have the links there, share with whomever. Read it yourself and make a comment. All of this is relevant to the monies that's going to be coming here and how we build a digitally equitable community, not just in the state of Kansas, but right here. I'm committed to doing what I have to do, even without this plan. And I would like to have any future help, if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Luzon.
Luzon, I did not get, can you resend that to us, please? Okay. Yeah. Okay, thank you, thank you. You want me to still resend it, or you got it? Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Why do y'all have these business cards in here? Do I need to bring mine the next time?
That's funny. We have one more person, Bjorn Garbic.
Are we on terms where we could pre-negotiate those two minutes?
No, just go ahead and present.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right. There we go. Good day, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, and everybody in between. I'm back to give you an update on the trial of the puchery, a civics lesson of sorts. This whole experience has been exciting, and as the saying goes, when someone gives you lemonade, reverse engineer it and find out how it's made. Since the last time I was here, I met a few people who heard about the case. With the exception of one individual who thought all dogs should be in heaven, stated with stronger vocabulary than probably is acceptable here, most have been astounded by the criminal charge for a dog at large, including a retired senator from this state, who said the focus should be on dealing with real criminals, not a dog on the run. I was also able to dig a little deeper into the root cause and why this law came to be. At first, I understood the extreme response and how the law made sense. However, I didn't just think about it once, and since had the opportunity to explore the inner workings of government presented itself, I figure, why not see if there's a path to solve an issue? Before I continue, I do feel the need to issue two corrections. Both the judge and the prosecuting clerk watched the speech and had some concerns with my quotes. So everyone should be given a chance to clarify their words. I'll issue a correction. To my statement about the judge reading the charge with a smirk, he states he was not laughing at the charge, but a word he asked to say as part of his job. So giggles for a legal term. Additionally, the prosecuting clerk had an issue with quoting me a crime-like murder. He notes he wasn't comparing the charge to murder. He was giving the extreme example of murder to explain the charge and process. And he also gave the example of theft. I don't know about you, but in life, I use examples as comparables, but I digress. Not undress, because that would be a Class C misdemeanor. As far as the trial goes, I'm not sure it's possible to get a fair one. During the motion, as the debate pressed on, the judge stopped to let me know, you're song and dance and playing the Hollywood card, coming here, calling it a game. I don't appreciate it. If you don't like it, go back to city council and do it again. So here I am, a good old American boy, just spent some time in Hollywood. I wonder if he still sings "God Bless Texas" for his time there at university. Maybe I'm just from the wrong side of the tracks or border. I know that some of you on the council mentioned a few things about your constituents dealing with prejudices. I'm not comparing the experience, but just an example. Maybe I'm the Hollywood type because I was on time and fully dressed. That certainly wasn't the case for everyone in the courtroom. In fact, I learned something new. Just like frequent flyer miles get you an upgrade on an airplane, those with frequent court appearances get a front-of-line pass even when they're late. I promise, I'm not taking the piss. Taking the piss is British slang. It's not public urination, because that would be a Class C misdemeanor. When I told the lawyer about the timeline events and that I was last in the courtroom, he mused that didn't, that they didn't want to let the cat out of the bag. I'm sure that's just a figure of speech, and there's no need to prosecute a loose pussy, pussycat, because that too would be a Class C misdemeanor. The judge also pointed out something I think that is very important. The people in the courtroom are just people. He stated this as I was the only citizen in the room not employed by the city. Now, I don't know about you, but I think I learned this pretty young. What do you want to be when you grow up? And a judge was an option. I read the book Everybody Poops, but not publicly, because that too would be a Class C misdemeanor. He further noted that this was all, would have been easier if I just came to him with what amounts to a sob story, and he could have made it cheaper.
Your time is up, sir.
Could I get that two minutes? Or 90 seconds?
I'll ask anybody on the governing body if they want to give you two more minutes. I see no desire from the governing body to extend it. Okay. We'll move on now to announcements from the body, and we'll start with Councilwoman Ortiz.
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay.
Yeah, a lot I want to say, but.
Take your time.
Take your time. So I'm going to fool myself earlier on KSNT, so I'll do it here again. You guys know I made a terrible thing happen today. I should say last night. And I first, I gotta, I gotta thank our police and all of our first responders. I mean, can you imagine? I come in there and happen to deal with that? But they did, and did a great job. So I thank, thank our fire and AMR and our police, who so quickly apprehended this, this monster. I have a whole page written out here, but I'm not going to be able to get through this, so. It is a terrible thing, and you know, there's 1,000 things that lead to these. And if we could go back, we would change all 1,000 things if we could. I'd just say the family and the people, there were some ladies. In the CJ online article today, there are some ladies who reached out and helped this little girl, their neighbors, and I thank them. Just keep this little girl and her family in her prayers. I, I don't know what was happening in that family, but I know there's people in that family. I'm sure there's some people in that family that loved her. And I know the neighbors loved her, and we as a community loved her, and it's a horrible thing when this happens. But thank God, we have, have men and women who respond and input a quick end to these things. It doesn't, it doesn't repair what happened. We can't forget what happened, but I certainly appreciate the efforts of our, our police. Thank you.
Councilman Kell.
I'm in a lot of lines with the same as Councilman Emerson. I, it's one of those things, I want to say what I want to say, but I know it's not going to be clean, not going to be nice. And so all I want to really kind of go with is that the, there's a vigil tomorrow night at the First Presbyterian Church of Topeka, Wednesday, October 4th, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. The address is 817 Southwest Harrison Street, right next to downtown, that will be going on tomorrow for, for Zoe.
Are you done?
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Neger?
I have nothing to add. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Mayor?
Nothing to add to that, Mayor, thank you.
Councilman Duncan?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilman Hofer? Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to offer my appreciation to the fire and police department and all the first responders, and thoughts and prayers for the family and the neighbors and friends. It broadens out a little bit for me to thinking about the efforts that we're trying to make now for our homeless residents and the caregivers and protectors who are doing everything they can and are working to do more to help make sure that these circumstances don't occur again. And thanks, and love and prayers to everyone. On a little bit different note, we were real, we were very well represented today in Manhattan at the KDOT local consulate that Councilman Dobler referenced earlier. There were five from the governing body, I think at least three from staff, two of our state representatives, and so that, that did go well. Thank you.
Councilwoman Vadiya Akala?
Thank you, Mayor. Shamika, thank you for your righteous anger. As many leaders in this city, employers, bankers, that can attend this poverty simulation, poverty is one of the largest mortality risks in the United States. poverty is one of the largest mortality risks in the United States. Experiencing poverty can increase the rates of child abuse and neglect five times higher than other groups. And a little prayer for baby Zoe. Them people brought little children to Jesus for Him to place His hands on them and pray for them, but the disciples rebuked them. Jesus said, "Let the little children come to Me and do not hinder them, for the kingdom of heaven belongs to such as these, rest, little girl." Thank you.
As is my practice, I like to have an opportunity to speak as well after council members have made their announcements. It's obviously a very difficult topic. Having learned about it earlier this morning, it's been on my mind all day. To help me get through a statement as well, because it is hard, I'd like to read the following statement on behalf of myself and I believe the governing body. Last night, Topeka first responders were called to the very tragic death of a child. There is no one in the community who isn't impacted by this. Our thoughts are with the family as they grieve their loss. I am grateful for the hard work and dedication of the fire crews who responded, performed emergency medical care to the child and to the police officers who began investigative work immediately and throughout the night and day. Investigators were quick to make an arrest, and I know the Shawnee County District Attorney's Office will continue to fight for justice once the case is in their hands. I share the community's concerns about this incident and the circumstances surrounding it. It is traumatizing at a community level. I have full faith that the process will be resolved and justice to this case and this family, and I encourage everyone to be patient and educate themselves on what that process looks like. I cannot thank enough the first responders and their leaders across the city for the work they did last night and the work they continue to do every day to serve the people of Topeka. Remember that any loss of life from violence is something we cannot tolerate in our city. And the loss of the life of a child is so impactful. It should make us really think about how we treat our brothers and sisters and how we offer quick ridicule rather than help and advice. So I thank you again for allowing me to make this statement, and we now know that, thanks to Councilman McHill's advisory about the candlelight vigil, if you can attend in person, give time and thought to this incident when you can. There is a need for one executive meeting this evening. If the city attorney will read.
The motion will be to recess into executive session not to exceed 40 minutes for consultation with the city attorney to discuss attorney-client privileged matters regarding current litigation as justified by KSA 754319B2. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers. The following staff are requested to assist the governing body in its deliberations, city attorney Stanley, and other staff as needed.
Thank you. We've heard the need for executive session. Motion to move into executive session by Deputy Mayor, seconded in by Councilman Emerson. Just the roll call vote, please. No, just ask for an aye. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One. Okay, we will recess into executive session. We'll take a quick 10-minute break before we start our deliberations. Thank you.
Can I have a snack?
We have concluded our deliberations in the executive meeting, and there's no further business coming before this body. The meeting is adjourned.